Wildlife waterway. That designation is outdated. Our community has grown significantly in the last few years, and this river is now used extensively for whole-body contact recreation, swimming, kayaking, tubing, paddling by children, families, our team, Uvener churches. AIDM's permit standards should reflect actual usage, not an outdated classification. If this were- If this were properly designated as a recreational water contact area, the treatment standards and monitoring requirements, from my understanding, would be far more stringent. Are we really going to discharge 1.2 million gallons of sewage effluent daily into water where children swim based on standards designed only to protect fish and wildlife? And this isn't the only discharge into the Flint River system. What is the cumulative flooding from all sources? Has AIDM modeled what happens when multiple facilities discharge during drought conditions? If this permit moves forward, which I strongly urge you to please consider to deny. AIDM must require full disclosure of design plans, flow modeling data, and treatment guarantees made publicly, not hidden, independent third-party audits conducted regularly with public reports, automatic penalties or shutdowns for repeated violations, not match-of-the fact warnings, monthly recreational water quality testing downstream, testing for E. coli, enterococcus, and pharmaceutical compounds with results publicly posted, a community complaint mechanism with enforceable response timelines for other water quality or operational issues.
You're almost done.
Yes, I have to say, I'm gonna skip a little bit. There's one thing that no one has thought, that I can come up with very strongly.
Quickly.
Based on that coordinates, the proposed discharge would enter the Flint River roughly half a mile upstream from the Flint River Bridge. How is that going to affect that bridge? Have you contacted Alda Tor, the Madison County engineer, to find out? Is there a study that has been done to look into whether that will cause any issues with erosion? Or-
Okay. I'm gonna cut you off.
Yeah.
You can submit written comments until 5 o'clock tomorrow if you want to send all that to us.
I would, thank you.
Yes. I now recognize Jason Pauls. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Good evening, my name is Jason Pauls. I'm the owner of TGL Adventures in Brown Bear. I represent myself along with North Alabama Canoe and Kayak and Brown Bear Canoe and Kayak as well. We offer kayak and canoe that brings families, schools, groups, and visitors to enjoy the stretch of river. We also partner with local businesses and host community cleanups. I'm here to speak in strong opposition to the proposal for new water treatment plan upstream that would discharge over 1 million gallons per day of treated sewage into the Flint River. This is an avoidable risk to the living river that's essential to our community, identity, and economy. The Flint is used for recreation, education, and wildlife habitat. Those compounds accumulate with sediments and food webs. They can trigger algae growth, lower oxygen, harm fish, turtles, that are the very base of our river. The proposal threatens local livelihoods. Our business and these two other businesses rely on clean, swimmable water to operate safely. If this charge proceeds, higher bacteria counts after storms, visible algae growth, or even the perception that sewage is being released upstream will depress visitation. Cancel school trips, undermine insurance and safety policies. That's not speculation. We live and die by customer trust. The result would be lost jobs, loss of sales tax, and a permanent hit to our outdoor recreation brand. Finally, I want to be clear, it's not anti-growth, it's pro-smart growth. We welcome investment that doesn't cost a lot of money, but sustains our community. Tourism and outdoor recreation are durable, homegrown sectors. Once you lose a river's reputation, you don't get it back at the pressure place. Protecting the Flint River protects our wildlife, our businesses, and our quality of life. Please choose the path that safeguards all three. Thank you for your time, for sharing with us.
I now recognize John Salasberry. All right, don't see Mr. Salasberry, so we'll go to the next. I recognize Rob Hebert. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name's Rob Hebert. I represent myself, my family, my wife, and my two boys. So moved down here in November 23, purchased our home after retiring from the Army, so to raise our boys on an Alabama frontier, the Flint River. Flint River is a frontier with endangered wildlife. It's TV with other jaw-dropping awesome wildlife that thrives in its current environment. Every day, my family and I traverse this river as stewards of this environment. We admire nature adventures, we fish, we watch rivers kayak, paddle board, and let's call it by taking our breath. Integra, great name. The Latin word of integra, wholeness, soundness. The business opportunity that Integra Sewer Treatment is simply that. It's a business opportunity. But they've already displayed, they're looking up to their own name. Not capable of doing business above board, simply doing what they're supposed to do. Inversely, there's an opportunity cost. And that's this entire forum, this entire community, the citizens that live here. As was mentioned earlier, there are water, amazing water and sewage treatment take those. It's North Alabama, we house Rocket City. We're capable of going to Mars. But somehow, we're being told we need to accept Integra's not-so-terrible water treatment. So I'll be clear, that's an alternative. On behalf of my community, demand that this permit not be permitted. And that the land that they've selected for a sewage treatment facility be immediately put into a natural resource conservation service easement, named after a selected endangered species found in the Flint River. Additionally, turn this location into a water treatment, innovation, and education facility that benefits our local schools. Thanks.
I now recognize Larry Vance. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Larry Vance, I represent myself. I've been living in this area for 30 years. One of the things that few people have already stated, the possibility of flooding, is we all know, we've seen on TV, the devastation, the floods happen. Well, sometimes homeowners find out that their home policy doesn't always cover, you know, they will make changes where we don't know about it. I don't want anyone to be able to come to a point that flooding, I've lived in Riverwalk subdivision, been in 17 years. I live on top of here, but I see we have beautiful homeowners living present. But that pump down there is working, but sometimes it doesn't work. If every water comes in here, all those homes are going to be flooded. It can happen, just like that. What I'm trying to do right now is that if your policy goes up, holidaying $400 a year, right? What we need to do is get you all to give us a $1 million dollar loan to be able to protect us, just in case. Not say you're gonna use it, but also homeowners who are in a flood zone, look at your flood is your policy. Dare anyone go up, go ahead and start counting on that and send the bill right here. We want to know how much money is going to cost, because therefore, we don't want to be looked up about. And so more than anything else is that I lost my house, I lost my whole house.
Sir, make sure you address me.
Okay. I lost my whole house in my neighborhood. Flood came down, only thing left was my kitchen and floor. All my walls, everything's gutted out. It's gonna be a different type of repair now, because now you got toxins coming in, and then now it's gonna be different. So I want us to be ready to be able to handle that, making sure that you put together a $1 million dollar loan to cover these people. Cover us, not these people, cover us and make sure we're ready for the flood. Thank you so much.
I now recognize Andrea Utley. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Andrea Utley, and I'm representing myself and my family as a resident of Berry Hill. I'm representing my students as a teacher at the middle school. Just tonight, I walked in, two of my students were leaving football practice, and they said, "This is the area you're going to save our river." I said, "I'm sure you try." But most importantly, I am representing Thomas Pajentic. He is the program lead for Project Healing Waters for Disabled Veterans here in Huntsville, Alabama. Thomas cannot be here tonight because he's hosting a fly fishing class at Orbis for Disabled Veterans. But he has asked for his comments to be read to the group on behalf of the organization Project Healing Waters. Project Healing Waters' mission is to heal America's veterans through the therapeutic art of fly fishing. The veterans in our local area that can have joined Project Healing Waters, and this has helped them to begin and continue their healing journeys. I started this program two years ago. We currently have over 70 disabled veterans participating in the program today. As a disabled veteran myself with 22 spinal surgeries, I know how easy it is to just sit on the couch while we hurt. Instead, we continuously get veterans up and outside because we have an area close by that we can walk to. Being outside fly fishing provides an environment that puts them in the here and now. When they are fly fishing, that's what they are thinking about instead of an event that had occurred or in or out of combat, as well as not thinking about what their future could or couldn't be because of that event that occurred. Local untamed stream areas in our area are hard to come by. The proposed drainage location into the Flint River, as well as downriver, provides the best local area section of the Flint River for our disabled veterans to not only safety deal with their physical and or mental disabilities, but it provides an area with an abundance of freshwater fish that allow these veterans to always catch fish instead of being let down like so many of our veterans are each and every day. Please don't take this from us and from them. I live in Berry Hill subdivision, and we have an access point just down the river from the proposed drainage site. This site allows us safe passage to the fishing area detailed above. This will negatively affect our disabled veteran community. And the point of contact again is Thomas Pajentic. He is a 100% disabled veteran and the program lead for Project Healing Waters in the Huntsville, Alabama location. Thank you.
I now recognize Amanda Briggs. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name's Amanda Briggs. I live in the Riverwalk subdivision. My house is on the Flint River. And I brought a picture. This was taken about 10 years ago with me and my kids in the river. It was really hot that day, and I couldn't keep them out of the river. So we were all in there, full body, as everybody keeps saying here tonight. So yeah, it's been 10 years since this picture was taken, and we're in the river every summer. And I joke with my husband all the time that the Flint River is like a highway in the summertime. There are kayakers on it constantly, from the crack of dawn until well after dark sometimes. So I just wanted to let you know that that's not just something that people are saying. It's for real. There are a lot of people on there. I wanted to kind of show you where my place is at. Can you guys see that? Okay? So you can kind of see like where the thing is and all that that they're gonna put in. And I'm down here. And the reason I bring that up is because as of right now, the end of my property is like the first sandbar that you get to before, so that you can actually get out of your kayak. Because up until that point, you know, sometimes the bank is a little high. But at the end of my property, there's a nice shoal that's really wide, and lots of kayakers stop there all the time. And so I talk to them all the time. And I wanted to bring that up because I might not be able to stop you guys from issuing this permit, but what I can do is put like one of those realtor boxes down there and put like a bunch of flyers on there to direct people to the keep the river clean org. And I will encourage them to write what happens to them if they do kayak without knowing that they're kayaking through all of that sludgey water. And then that way, there's a record that they can go and they can write down, "Hey, I was sick, and I was perfectly fine up until I was through this river." So that we can go back and actually accumulate how many people are being affected by this, because we have a lot of people who come down that river who don't live in this community. And they don't know that that sewage treatment plan is being installed. I mean, I get people all the time coming from as high up as like Berry Hill, coming all the way down. The other thing I wanted to show you on the other side of my thing is a picture of what that flooding looks like. This is taken from my backyard, or this is from my back porch. And I wanted to show you that that river does not stay in its banks at all. And this happens not just once in a while, this happens multiple times a year. Always in the spring, always in the fall. There was one Christmas where somebody called me up and said, "Do I need to come to your house to sandbag?" I said, "No, I don't think so," but it was 30 feet from my back door. And I want you to know, this happens all the time. Let me see if I have any other notes in here. I did want to bring up what Larry said, you know, about possible increases in our flood premiums. Right now, I am zoned for 100-year flood. If you're talking about the amount of water or effluent coming through there, that's not gonna be 100-year flood anymore. This is gonna back up into my septic tank and cause sewage to come up into my house? Believe me when I say I will sue you. I'd like for everybody staying down who's going to be, you know, permitting this permit. And also Mr. McDonald's, and I have deep pockets, and I will sue you. And if I, and I will bankroll this organization to allow people coming down the river. If they get sick, I will bankroll a place on the internet for them to document what happened to them. And we will sue you. I think that's everything I wanted to say.
I now recognize Deborah Klotfelter. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Yes. Sorry. My name is Deborah Klotfelter. I represent myself, and I would say anybody else who wants clean water. I am a native Huntsville area, and growing up here, I never used to think anything about the term pollution or anything with any of our water, because growing up swimming in the Tennessee River, Flint River, you know, everything was so clean. And over the years, I've gradually watched with all the development here in Huntsville, all the trees getting cut down, more companies coming in, more pollution getting dumped into all our various streams around, not just Huntsville, but all over the state, well, like everywhere. And I just wanted to say that one thing, I'm a water person. I go to swim and I paddle the Flint at different, excuse me, I have allergies, it's a shame. But I mean, I've paddled and swam in the Flint River for many years, and I've been around places where the water is real polluted. I actually attended, three or four years ago, an AIDM for another river. And people were about a permit, it's a different type of industry, but they were talking about, people were getting up commenting about doctors and a lot of people about being sick. They had documented cases of a lot of people getting sick from the fluids being dumped into that particular river. And having been around Flint, I don't want to see it happen to that. I urge that this permit be denied. And a lot of study go into determining another location, and as you said, there's alternate methods for Integra or whoever to, I know we have to have sewage treatment plants. But just as a person who likes being on the water, I just want to see, don't mess up the Flint River. As they're showing that Integra does not have, appears not to have a good reputation just from what I've heard tonight. I haven't done a lot of study on this or something, but I'm very grateful to all the people here who are excited and committed to wanting to preserve this river. I'm just one person, and I do not live on it, but I have used it. And I just want to see it stay clean. So please deny the permit and take into consideration the people, not just people with the deep pockets or the money who want to pollute places. I'm not anti-development, but I control development so that things are done right, so we don't get one of them more dirty rivers. It's hard to clean it up, and people get sick from it. And so I just ask you to deny it and do a whole lot more studying before any permit is granted from somewhere else. Thank you.
I now, I turned it off. I now recognize Erin Felder. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
All right, I'm Erin Felder, and I'm representing my family, my two small boys in Huntsville. My name is Erin, and I stand before you not just as a concerned citizen and mother of two boys that will be affected by this treatment plan, but as a voice for the Flint River that has sustained our communities and our wildlife and our local economy for generations. This plan could pose a threat to our health or environment and our future. We know what happens when corners are cut, corporations put profits over people, and government fails to protect its citizens. Dumping this waste into the Flint River introduces chemicals and pollutants that can harm fish and wildlife, poison our soil, and contaminate groundwater that feeds our wells and streams. It risks public health, especially for vulnerable populations like children's and seniors. And once it's in the river, we can't take it back. We're not just talking about a river, we're talking about a recreational treasure for families and kayakers, an autotacker, wildlife, a lifeline for nearby farms and ecosystems, a symbol of our community. Allowing this waste to be dumped sends a message that our water, our river, and our people are expendable. I refuse to accept that, and I hope you do too. Who benefits from this? Not us, not our children, and not our future generations. Only Integra Water stands to gain at our expense. Please do not hand our river over to corporate polluters. Stand with us, stand with the families who fish in the river, stand with the small businesses that depend on clean water, and stand with the next generation who will inherit this river. We do not need more environmental regret. We need courage, we need leadership, and we need you to protect us. Our respectful request is denied.
I now recognize John Grimes. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is John Grimes, I'm representing myself and my wife. We're here today to oppose in strong, responsible terms granting the permit to Integra for this. There's several reasons why this, you've heard of long but new, of speeding cars tonight, and some very, very powerful reasons to oppose this. One of the things I'd like to know is why is this plan being notified where it is? We'd get no benefit from this plan. We're all on set accounts. This is all going to be waste contained from other places. I understand there's possibility they're gonna be shorting in waste. Is that true? That's true, and I'm very concerned with that because they're gonna bring down Winchester Road. And Winchester Road is not an old country's road anymore. It is dangerous road, and it is, people are gonna, they don't even know what speed they're in there. It's just a suggestion. Last, one other thing I'd like to point out is I know that AIDM's regulatory power is somewhat limited, primarily due to fines and penalties, is that correct? Well, that doesn't change the behavior of a corporation. A fine or penalty is just a cost of doing business. It's oftentimes cheaper and easier for them to continue on with the behavior, no matter how bad it is, because they can just write off the fine. That's all I can say. Thank you.
I now recognize Tabitha Schlimmer. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name's Tabitha Schlimmer. I'm here representing myself, my husband, and this entire community. Well, I didn't really get a notification about voting on where this was going to be placed. I've been following this story for about a month, month and a half now. When they were ground in Meridianville, I wonder if they were made aware of how much damage it would do to their whole area. Integra is a privately-owned corporation, meaning that they don't really follow most of the rules. They can pay off the debt. It's a large corporation that won't really care if they hurt a small subdivision. Most of us, all of us here, use a septic tank. So for y'all to say that this entire treatment plan is for a small subdivision, that just doesn't make sense. That doesn't make any sense. All of the subdivisions that they have just built are on septic systems. I'm very proud of my home. My husband and I purchased our home in the summer of last year. We bought it with the knowledge that we were close to Flint River. I love the country. He is more of a city person, that's where he grew up. And we found the perfect home that was located just outside of the city, but still close enough to the necessities. I love it out there. I get to watch the stars, I get to play with my dog, I get to play in the river. If y'all permit this, I will no longer get to do any of those things that would take the love away from which I wanted to purchase that home. Now, if I want to sell my home, the property value is gonna go way down. Would you buy my home when it is next to a sewage treatment plant? I don't think you would. I don't think many people would. I'm from Birmingham, Alabama. I'm from Birmingham, Alabama, so I know about the pollution, I'm from the north side of Birmingham. I know about all the pollution. I have many family members who live in Montgomery. My uncle is a Realtor, his two sons are also Realtors. My cousin works in the police department in Montgomery. I know about the industrial side of Montgomery as well. And you guys probably wouldn't be happy about having a sewage treatment plant in your backyard either. Now, I would like to read off something that was quoted from y'all's website. "Alabama is blessed with a wealth and variety of natural resources, which provide significant social, economic, and environmental benefits and opportunities for citizens of Alabama. The mission at Aiden is to assure for all citizens of the state a safe, healthful, and productive environment." Do you know what your own website says? Because permitting this to a privately owned company is not following anything of what y'all are striving to do. We appreciate you coming out here. I know Montgomery is a very far drive. It's not fun being on 65, traveling through Birmingham. I know all the potholes, they're awful. I want you to seriously consider the community. I know that sewage treatment plants need to happen, I'm from a big city. I know that they need to be, be there. They don't need to be in our nice country area, though. That's what we wanted in the area. That's why so many people chose to live out here in this area. Doing this treatment plant? I, I don't know why it's called a treatment plant when it's just dumping waste into the water without a care in the world. Thank you so much for your time.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Susan Weber, most people call me Seuss, and I'm the founder and recently retired chairman of the Flint River Conservation Association. I don't have many of these people here, but I was asked to attend. After COVID started, we kind of dissipated, and now we're trying to get back on our legs again. This seems like a good cause to take up, and I hope we can do something for these people. But we are not in opposition to water, wastewater treatment plants. We are advocates of clean water. And how we can help these people is to teach them, teach every one of you if you want. Alabama Water Watch, which is down in Auburn, they teach different groups of people all around the state how to test their water. Now, it is a commitment, and you have to turn in the data in order to have it count. It is EPA protocol data. EPA is the Environmental Protection Agency. And for years, I actually worked with Aiden on 319 projects, which is money that came from EPA Region 4 down through Madison County to the watershed. And we had a person at collaboration on the watershed management plan for each section of the Flint River. And the Southern Watershed Management Plan was the one that was created by one of our volunteers, and it got the best acclaim by EPA Region 4 as the best plan in the United States. That one certainly did cover this area, and you're in the northern part of the watershed. But we do have plans for you too. Now, the watershed is now under the command of Mark. Mark, stand up.
Make sure, make sure you're addressing me, Ms. Weber.
Yes, sir.
Make sure you're addressing me.
Okay. But anyway, this is the Flint River watershed. It is 567 square miles, we represent the whole thing. We have done projects in the whole thing, a lot of them with Aiden money that was filtered down through the EPA. And, yeah, you can hold it up. 567 square miles and about 67 miles long. Starts in Tennessee. Starts in Tennessee, can you turn it around a bit? Southern counties is Tennessee, and that is where we have this fish. And this fish is in other places on the Flint. This is a slackwater dogger, which is federally listed as threatened. So I want you to know about this, because we have found it in other places on the Flint. We have lots of doggers on the Flint, but this is the only federally listed species to date. This is the only one. But we're hoping to get others. Now, the way we can help you is if we can get Alabama Water Watch to come up here from Auburn and teach a class on water quality testing, you can do it at the source pipe, you can do it upstream and downstream from the source pipe, and turn in that information to Alabama Water Watch. Now, Frica, our group has tested on three different water Frica plants on the Flint, and it wasn't all that great. We had really good tests on two. And the third one, we had to report to Aiden because it wasn't doing a good job. They were adding some kind of disinfectant, which you could smell all the way across the river. It was terrible. And, and as we approached to do the water testing there, we nearly passed out. So I won't tell anybody where that was unless they really want to know. But we can help you with that, and in other words, we are advocating that water quality testing is the way to go on this. If they're going to put that in, if they insist on putting this plant in, this is the way we should go. You all become citizen scientists. Actually, you only need about five people, you don't need everybody in this room. Just committed citizen scientists to learn how to do this and commit to it. So that's all I have to say.
Good evening, I'm Rodney Keaton.
Sorry, there's a fly that keeps flying in my face. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name's Rodney Keaton, I'm representing myself. I'm a resident of Barrio subdivision, live next door to the Stafford's and the Hoopers. Our, our house is also within seven or 800 feet of the proposed site. I'm probably not going to be able to say that much better than these guys have been able to say, and I'm probably going to repeat some of the things you've already heard, but I wanted to share some things from my personal experiences. Like I said, we live 800 feet from the proposed plant, so the smell, the sound, all of those different things are a concern for us. But we use the river also. I'm a minister in town, as my wife has already said, I've baptized people in that river. I'm a track coach here at Buckhorn, and at least once or twice a year, we do flood trips down the river. And I can assure you, if this plant goes in, none of my parents, none of the parents of any of these students will let their kids go on these trips if they know that the water's contaminated or possibly toxic, if it can hurt them in any way, they just won't. I wouldn't either, and I wouldn't blame them. My one other concern here, and I'll before all of them say, that I plan to say, but when I heard the gentleman from Integra speak, my one other concern here is, is he made a comment, I'm probably going to get it wrong, but the idea of whether a company seeks to be a responsible neighbor and part of the community and all these good, positive sounding things, but it's striking, it's very odd, because it's a known fact that sewage treatment facilities are going to affect our property values. So I don't understand how somebody could come up and say that we're going to be good stewards of your neighborhood, or we're going to try to be good neighbors, when the very thing they're going to do is going to lower our property values immediately. Beyond that, regarding the shooting issue that was brought up, I'm sure, and no disrespect, I'm sure that Integra would tell you, well, once the facility gets built, it's not going to be an open wooden area for people to, you know, target, shoot, do all those things, and that's probably true. But, but what's striking again is odd is that the continued shooting, it's not just this one instance that Miss Stafford brought up, but it's happened multiple times, is another demonstration of the lack of concern that these people in this company have for people that live nearby. Saying that several leaders of the community have said that they didn't know anything about this until, until the community spoke up. Again, was another reason that I thought it's odd that somebody that claims they want to be a good neighbor and a good member of the community, didn't come by, didn't put out flyers, didn't say, hey, we're going to be part of the community, this is a safe thing, it's great. I know when I moved in to Barrio, several people came up and said, hey, welcome to the neighborhood. When Stafford moved in, we came over, hey, welcome to the neighborhood. Integra never did any of that. And I know they're not required to do that, but you'd think that somebody that wants to be a good steward of what they're doing and be open and transparent would do something like that, and they haven't been. But fortunately, this is where you guys come in. Your mandate, and I know the person, two people before me read it, I'll read it to you again, I'm all just, but your website says that you assure for all citizens of the state a safe, healthful, and productive environment. This website is designed to keep you informed and to help you as you live and work in Alabama. This is what you're called to do, this is your mandate. And so when, when we have no recourse, that's why we're all here saying, we can't do this, you're in a position to do it. Take care of our state and our environment, and take care of us as citizens of that environment, instead of just allowing something to happen that they know is toxic. I'm not denying that, they wouldn't deny that. That's why they have to treat it and clean it. But you guys have the power to deny this permit, and I, I would wholly ask that you do so.
I now recognize Melissa Perry. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Hi, I'm Melissa Perry, and I'm representing myself. You know, it's sad to have to stand here and say it, but the truth is that it's not the progress, it's the, Aiden has not given us a reason to trust you. We don't trust Integra. But the way that this, that the notice was posted really felt underhanded and sneaky to us. We're looking at these pictures of, of this nasty stuff in the river that, that's your responsibility, that's on you, and you haven't done it. You're considering a permit for a company that is in non-compliance, you're considering a permit that hasn't been properly researched. You're supposed to represent us, you're supposed to be protecting us, and we feel betrayed And this is not an accusation. You are all, I am sure, honest and people of integrity, but it feels corrupt. It feels like big corporations and their deep pockets are what is governing our state. So take, take a moment to pause, take a moment to show us that you represent us, that you are for, you're on our team. You can do the, the research, do the independent studies, show us that you care about what kind of facility is going in. Give us credit when we say we use this river in a way that is inconsistent with how you tell us we use the river. Listen to what they're saying, and show us who governs this state. Is it the private corporations, or is it the people of Alabama?
I now recognize Gerald Burrell. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
My name is Gerald Burrell, I represent myself, I live on the Flint River as well. It was not my intent to speak to you gentlemen and may I want to see them. The longer I sat there, the more I kind of felt like I was on the set of Aaron Brockovich or something. This can't be reality. Like, you know, 10 years from now, I'm going to be following the path of that movie, which I know it's a movie, but when this first came out, like a lot of people have said, it was like I had one day to respond. Believe you or me, I wrote Neil Strong, I wrote my state senator for the, our congressional district, my Madison County supervisor, our two state senators that are in DC, and basically the response was, well, you got to talk to Aiden. And so no elected official that I can vote out for not, you know, protecting our interests is involved. I mean, you would think that somebody from Madison County should have to sign off on this, somebody from the city of Huntsville, or somebody that lives up here. I mean, no disrespect, you guys are down in Montgomery, that's a long way from Huntsville. So I was in the Navy for 21 years, retired, I was an engineer, came back here. One thing we had to do with the Navy, though, I was an engineer, and we had to go out three nautical miles before we could release treated sewage. Twelve nautical miles for untreated sewage. I know it's a little bit different, maybe the systems are a little bit different, but that was just our Navy standards. I know you guys, you guys are the ones that know the standards. Everything here is great, it's a kumbaya out in the way, we all get to come up and tell you how the kids swim in the water, we go kayaking, if you don't want it, if you don't look concerned about it. You guys have to watch. I stood and watched for 21 years so that we could be free. It's your turn, you have the knowledge. Look at what people have said tonight, I can promise you, you talk to the three kayak owners, the different companies, they have numbers of people that have rented kayaks. There's all kinds of people. I don't rent kayaks for my own, but I have four of my own that I go out with my whole family consistently, time after time after time. What I can tell you, because I can't speak to the numbers, I wish I could give you the statistics, you know, I tested both of our connectivity, our plenty of phosphates, chlorines. I could talk to you all day about that, I can't talk to you about your requirements. You guys have the reason, I have a history of reason, but what I can talk about is what I do now. And since I've been out for the last 11 years, I've been doing real estate for 10 years. I sold 145 million in sales in North Alabama in the last 10 years. I've helped over 520 people buy or sell a house. I know a thing or two about how to sell in real estate. I promise you, this will lower the value. Nobody goes, hey Jerry, can you give me a spot on the river that's got contaminated water? People buy the river because they want to use the river. They go, they see people going with kayaks, they see people fishing, they see people. We do something called riverside, we just sit in the river, we sit there, we listen to music, we sit at that little float that has whoon on it, we kick it back and forth from chair to chair, and we sit there, and we enjoy, and we fellowship, it's community. If we lose access to the river, it will damage our economy, it will damage North Alabama. North Alabama is known for its natural resources. Use your knowledge. Even if they did 100% everything perfect, let's say they had a precedence where they've never made a mistake, and I pray that that's their goal, that's what they strive to do, but we're all human, right? Let's say they never made a mistake. Let's say they never made a mistake, you ever heard of Fukushima? Fukushima had a tide wave that hit it, nuclear contamination was all up and down the waste stream, it came all the way over to our western shores. You know how many tornadoes we had in North Alabama? What's the redundancies? In the Navy, we have redundancies, if we lose one vehicle overfall, we have another. If you lose one place to clean, your CHP, collection hoarding tank for transferring sewage, you have a redundancy. Do they have redundancies in place? If they do, how come we're not telling the people? The biggest concern is people don't know, and they're afraid, and they have fear. But the other thing is, is all it takes is one hour for the contamination to happen, and you can't put it back. You just can't, we can't go back. It's a natural resource, it provides for our economy, we utilize it more than how it's titled, and maybe we shouldn't, however, that's how we utilize it. Guys, this is, you have to do this, there's no elected official, there's nobody that we can be jalous to, you have to watch to make this right. Don't allow it not to be right because of money or any other reason.
I now recognize Emma Williams. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Yeah, my name is Emma Williams, and I'm representing myself. Thank y'all so much.